All right, welcome back, everybody. I'm gonna invite our treasurer to the table here.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, don't worry. That was fun.
Okay.
All right. We'll just jump right on in.
All right. All right, so first thing, I've got two things today. Um, the first one is the biggie, the um, new cash handling policy, the cleaning up of it, changing verbiage, adding, you know, some things that needed to be added. Um, so Lisa worked on that before she left and um, we just, we've gotten it approved, you know, with um, everyone else, and we're just here to get that taken care of now and get that one cleaned up so that we can send out the departments, all the new cash handling policies now and everything, so that they have that.
Okay.
Um, this-
Good to meet.
Yeah.
I've read through it, looks good.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the second one is just the yearly cancellation of the outstanding warrants that we do, so. Just a list of those and uh, Tim already signed off on that, so we've got his signature for that. So, that one's good to go too.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Easy.
Yeah. Easy, easy peasy, hopefully.
Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
I, I do have a question. Um, as I was reading through the warrants.
Yeah.
Um, and canceling them.
Mm-hmm.
I think it said uh, they have to be older than a year, and yet on the list, some of them are not older than a year. Are we canceling the ones that are not older than a year?
Mm-hmm.
Like, you get into like page three here. The date on it would be like ten twenty-five, or twenty-three, okay, that's-
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that's not bad.
I think we're good on them.
Yeah, I think you are.
I think it's twenty-two, no, no, that's okay. No, twenty-three, twenty-four, that's okay. You hadn't alarmed there for a second.
Oh.
Oh. All right.
It was late last night, it was almost-
That's okay. I understand.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, then I think we're, we're good. We'll put this on the next agenda.
Yes, for next Monday. This one I'm on there for that one, the thirtieth.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Anything fun and exciting other than the new employee going on?
Just, just her, which was really exciting, so we filled that position, which is great, so especially um, transitioning into tax time, it's nice to have that extra body back there, so um, no, just working on um, you know, gearing up for tax time. So, that's kind of our big thing next month, so um, we're always super busy with that and we just work through it together, so lots of, you know, possibly working on weekends, you know, we do comp time, that sort of thing, just to get the payments processed for the taxpayer, so that's, that's what we'll be gearing up for.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Sounds good.
I can't think of anything else. That's about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Easy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Um-
Love easy.
Yeah. You and me both, for sure.
Okay, social republic.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, do I need to reserve anything? So I need to, okay, okay, all right, awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have a good day.
You too. All righty, well, I think next up is Public Works.
Morning.
Come on out.
Sorry, we're a bit late, some students.
Yep, you're right, I'm timed.
Just in time.
Just in the nick of time.
We weren't late at all, it's like-
Yeah, well, late on my cloth, but glad it worked out.
No, you're fine.
We're playing catch-up, Richard's back, Mike's back, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, regrouping and catching up after vacations.
Ah. No, we have a-
I know, vacations are a glorious thing.
They are.
Yeah. Uh, we just have one discussion item this morning, and that is to request to go out to add, again, for an engineering construction tech position. And um, Dave's here to answer any questions that you may have about what, why, and all those good things.
Yeah. If you have any questions, I mean, we've been trying to pick up another person. Actually, several people, the engineer scale and the technician scale, and it's been sort of slim pickings, but we're gonna try one more time. We have quite a bit of work uh, to do this winter and um, bring someone maybe up to speed on some design things and some uh, keeping the files up to date for our federal audits on our funding, and I wanna make sure we always, we're on top of those things and um, so, helping some of the permitting, road approach permits and permits working to Canada right away, so. We'd like to go out and see if we can't get a technician.
So, what does a technician do as opposed to an engineer?
Well, a technician assists the engineers, you know, like in project development. They do maybe uh, go out and do field, uh, collect information in the field for, let's say, traffic counts and, and uh, uh, maybe some survey, do some uh, uh, assessments of the topography, so. We have complaints of drainage and we can send someone out and say, well, it's, they're at the lowest spot in the road, so that's why they're getting all the water, those kinds of things, and uh, basically assist the engineer in the development of the projects. Just, it works at a different level, lower level, uh, in terms of the technical abilities. But they're very important to the work that we do.
Well, we can pay a technician to do something that we'd have to have an engineer do otherwise. Yeah, um-
No. May, if I could, yeah, maybe a little clarification on that. An engineer is performing design functions, so analysis, independent design. Whereas a technician typically is, like Dave said, collecting data. Um, may perform some calculations that are engineering-type calculations, but not necessarily that independent analysis and um, design.
You know, the state, there's uh, requirements the state has for having engineers on your staff and, and those are different than what the technician would do. And uh, a lot of times in order for us to get certain kinds of funding, we have to have certain, people working at certain levels at the engineering level and where the technicians would gather that information, help the engineer put the packages together for funding or whatever. But they're clearly different tasks.
Yeah, no, that's not what I was-
I'm not sure if I answered, I might not have understood your question.
Well, it's not really what I was implying, but if, if, you know, if something needed to get taken care of and you didn't have a technician and the engineer might have to just go out and get that information.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Where you're paying an engineer to go do something that you could-
Yeah.
Have a technician.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I was, got you talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, making better use of our professional engineering staff, absolutely. Yeah, I apologize for misunderstanding.
And then oftentimes, we'll, we'll have an engineer go out with a technician, train them, because I mean, a lot of times if you have a technician that you've been working with for a long time and you know that, what they're really good at, and that you can trust when they bring something back, then that really cuts down a lot of cross-checking and those kinds of things, so.
Yeah. I'm supportive.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's the best use of our resources is always what we're gonna strive for.
Commissioner Netherland, do you have any questions?
I'm supportive.
Oh, I see you twice on there.
Yeah.
Double, double check in.
All righty.
Great, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you guys have any, commissioners, do you have anything for Public Works?
No.
No.
All right.
I'm today.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great week.
I know.
We'll see y'all later.
The colors are changing.
Yes, they are, happy fall.
Right. It's exciting. All right.
Melissa, how are you? Doing well, how are you?
Good.
Your packet's really long because of me this week. It's all just informational. Um, Dave's out, so I'm gonna cover his item. Okay, first one should be fairly simple, it's a, a law enforcement assisted diversion program contract. This is our contract just with the healthcare authority. Um, we did take a little bit of a hit financially, I think, across the board, I think it was twenty percent. So, um, we will, we do plan to continue our partnership with Olympic Health and Recovery Services to be the service provider. Um, the emphasis is really gonna be maintaining staff, so we're still working out a little bit of what public health or Mason County will retain for admin, um, and what is gonna go to Olympic Health and Recovery Services, so I will bring their subcontract at a future date. If this moves forward and is approved. And I think the next is the next, the thirtieth.
Yes. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm in favor, but let's-
Yeah, it's awesome. It's a good program.
Yeah, and I think um, one really important thing to note too, just as an aside, is um, the whole law enforcement assisted diversion. We may have seen a decrease in referrals from law enforcement, but we've had other programs like the co-responder program, which has been really successful, because the sheriff's office applied for an additional grant to expand that, so. Um, I think it's becoming a lot more of a holistic program, if you will, so it's been working really well.
All right.
No questions about that one?
Nope, supportive.
All right, uh, next one is a contract amendment uh, for the youth connection. The provider did request some changes in the language that's on their contract. Um, it's pretty minor, um, I think we included, we included the original language and then what will be changed. This is pulled directly from the Consolidated Homeless Grant Guidelines. Um, and then one item, which is making it sound a little bit less of a requirement and more of an option.
Okay.
Are there any questions about that item?
No, it looks good.
Commissioner Netherland on the-
Commissioner Netherland, you have any questions?
Nope.
All right. All right.
Easy, we're reading through here, okay. Um, so these next ones are actually really just discussion, really wanna get feedback um, from the board on how we can really move forward in this, this new contract cycle. Um, work on our relationships um, with our providers and just do things above board the right way, um, so that everybody's happy. So, uh, that was one of the reasons why your packet was really long. If you, I, they were, I did, they were actually Excel sheets, so I made them PDFs. If you couldn't read anything, I'm happy to send you the Excel versions if you wanted to dig into it, but um, ultimately, you know, uh, Consolidated Homeless Grant Guidelines from Commerce, as well as even the county policies, require that we have some processes in place for contract monitoring. Um, the county policies don't really give the how, but I think that's probably because you're leaning on the departments to develop those. Um, so I just wanted to have a little bit of a conversation on um, some ways that we might be able to improve the process. Um, I've heard things, you know, I hear you on more communication and involving boards. We absolutely are working on that. Um, but I think some of the things, you know, if we can provide a little bit of context into the previous item that I had, which is changing some of the language in the contract. When we do our monitoring, it's helpful to have things that are actually very clear expectations, so that is why we use language like must, um, rather than should, or they'll do this instead of they may do this, is because when we're looking at something from a monitoring perspective, we wanna be able to say, are they doing this yes or no? Are they in compliance, yes or no? I think that there's a little bit of gray area still on things, which then I think leads to, I'll address the elephant in the room, personalization, it's this person's picking on this person. Um, so any feedback, Travis, your feedback's also really important, because you're really observant. Any feedback on ways that we can improve our process? Um, some of the things that we thought about is, I've actually contacted Nicole at Risk quite a bit, just to kind of bounce ideas through her and have kind of a second set of eyes, unbiased, um, from a contract perspective or a legal perspective, what do you think of this? Um, I obviously don't wanna formalize that and add more to her plate, because I know she's really busy, but if that's a practice that you would be supportive of doing every once in a while, I'm happy to continue doing that. Um, any thoughts?
Well, we had that meeting, I don't know, three weeks ago, something like that, where hopefully we resolved some of the communication barriers that had come up. I don't know, what's the progress report on that, because that kind of ties into exactly what you're talking about.
Uh, to jog my memory a little bit, from our advisory board meeting?
This would be our meeting, that was your new board meeting.
Oh, yes, 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 it has been. Um, actually, Risk Management is looking at that, because from my observation and from my review, I still think that what decision was made on the department's side stands. Um, but we've discussed, I think because there's a legal case associated with it, um, Risk is interested in looking at that. Uh, but I am gonna hopefully get a timeline on when we'll have an answer on that today. I meant to follow up on Friday and get a chance. Um, but involving the board, so continuing to CC them as necessary, haven't had anything come up since then. Um, but there may be a few things, but I do need to talk with Dave about them when he gets back tomorrow.
How is the communication, however? Is it generally better?
Um, I do think that it's pleasant, um, I think, I don't, I don't know if you've heard something differently, but um-
No, no hidden question, I heard, just curious.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think that we're all really committed, I mean, nobody wants this to be a complicated process. It's not fun. It is not fun, no one enjoys it. Um, I think we are still having some challenges with getting some questions answered um, in a really clear and direct way. Um, it, sometimes it takes several times asking, um, but that's when I just kind of, I, Dave and I are in really, really close communication, and I let him know if I need him to escalate something. I think it's appropriate if Dave on a board member level gets involved, and so there are a few things that we are looking into where we will have to engage board members here, probably this week. So, um, in progress, but I, I do feel that there's a commitment to improving the communication.
From all parts.
Yes.
Okay, good, and I, I cannot stress the importance of communicating with the board members, having them involved is so important, because as a board member, you're responsible.
Mm-hmm.
And so to include them in I would include them for a while.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think, well, that's actually another, um, another thing is, the board members, but also this board, how frequently do you want updates on things, as, you know, let's say we have a corrective action or something that looks like it may become one. I think from our side, we're feeling like we would rather over-communicate with you all than-
I would rather be alerted.
Sure. We can do that.
I think you're right, over-communication is gonna be better than, if it gets to be too much, we might say, whoa.
Okay. We can do that. Any other-
In general, we get, we get comments from people, like I shared with you, that, where's this coming from?
Mm-hmm. Any other, Commissioner Netherland, any thoughts?
Nope.
Okay.
Doing great, uh, uh, I apologize for not being able to be there, so I'm kind of disconnected on it, but you're doing great. I'll send this volume on when I get back.
Okay. Um, anything else on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, next item, also um, kind of a discussion, but probably moving towards action here very quickly. Um, our intent with this item regarding emergency shelter options is we didn't wanna find ourselves in November and it's snowing, and then we're calling each other, trying to figure out what we're gonna do then. Um, so our, our department kind of worked on um, putting together some options um, and actually doing some of the math on the dollars on what it would look like if we were doing RFP for um, emergency shelter. So, um, just as a little bit of a background and a reminder, back earlier in June, July, when we, um, when the advisory board and the board were finalizing the, the funding awards for the homeless response system, a reserve was held for emergency shelter, single adult emergency shelter, um, because we didn't get any applications for them. Um, so I do believe that an RFP would be the next step. Um, that is, that aligns with the county's policies for allocating anything above fifty thousand dollars. Um, and it would be the fairest way to just get applications from anyone who is interested, willing and able to provide this service. Um, so I think some of the options that we had given, you know, rather than have this be a year-round shelter, we can kind of revisit what it was prior to being year-round, and that be a cold weather shelter. Um, so I think with the, the way that the dollars were calculated, we decided, let's look at November first through the end of February. Possibly extend that to March, because I know March can sometimes still be a little dicey with the weather. Um, but if we were to do that, um, we could fund two overnight emergency shelter aids, um, which is the funding that's needed for a thirty-five um, adult capacity. Um, I attached sample RFPs from other communities, and I think when I was reviewing and comparing them, the, the biggest kind of common denominator that I saw was that they identified a minimum bed count. Um, however, they did expect that there was also capacity to scale up in the event of any other additional hazardous weather situation. So, let's say we have like a really cold snowy day, how are they gonna get from thirty-five beds to, I believe, um, well, it depends on who the provider is, but we've usually done about between fifty and fifty-four. Um, I think we did that during COVID as well. Um, if we do that, if we do a shelter for those months, uh, paying for the overnight staff, we could also potentially do the meal as well. So, we provided a kind of a general calculation of maybe what that would be. Um, altogether, that actually came in at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred, which is less than what has been reserved for emergency shelter. So, the remaining balance could help support that whoever the provider or the building that provides the service, we could support utilities, other administrative costs, such as finance, um, accounting types of things. Okay. Any questions? We did also throw in actually um, a scenario or some options where, let's say, the only provider we get that applies is one that has provided the service in the past. Um, where there were significant financial challenges and concerns. Um, an option for continuing to partner with that uh, provider would be to potentially um, directly contract with the employees to do the payroll through, I think ten ninety-nine is the proper method. Um, and then we could kind of remove that accounting and financial administration from the provider and just manage it directly.
I don't know. I don't know that I'm I don't know, I'd have to think on that one.
I think it's gonna depend on what comes in.
That's what I think as well, yeah.
Do you think you have anybody else that's going to step up, since I didn't apply early?
Sure. I think um, we will just have to see. We have had interest expressed from the previous provider. Um, but that's all that I've heard so far. Um, I think the location and the building already being permitted to provide the service is helpful, but I do understand the concerns. Um, I just want us to be prepared for what the options, uh, what the options may be if we don't get applications from elsewhere.
That's a big challenge and a necessary challenge, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know how we go back to somebody that's let us down so many times before without putting something in place that's going to be really problematic, saying you gotta check in like daily, which is gonna be, you know, quite the burden.
I think not just letting us down too, it was letting those that they were supposed to be serving down as well. I don't know that they were meeting their needs either, so unfortunately.
Well, we do have, so the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board is meeting this Wednesday. Um, it wasn't on the agenda originally, Commissioner Taraswell, but if you're okay with me adding that to the agenda, maybe we can have some further conversation, okay. Um. Any other thoughts or any other people express interest to you that we can make sure the RFP gets to them?
No, but maybe, you know, there's a lot of big brains in the room when you have that behavioral health meeting, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, I'll head back to the agenda and we'll see what we come up with, and then maybe next Monday, we'll come with a plan. Any other questions?
Commissioner Netherland, any questions?
Nope, thank you.
All right, well, that was all I thought, it's a must-thing to know.
All right. I don't have any.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call you later, but I didn't get back to you on that.
Oh, that's okay. A Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good to see you, Cal.
Good to see you. I haven't seen you in a while.
I know, I know, it's like you're on vacation or something. I heard, I was calling on conference, I was on vacation, whatever.
Yeah, I did have a, did a road trip.
Good. That's very good. It's up to you.
It's up to us? All right, well, you're just in time operation, your guys are up.
We have heckle time. In heckle. For sure. I love you.
Oh, thanks.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Long time no see.
A long time no see.
Um, I'm gonna, this is Kayla's show this morning, so.
I am so excited about this show, by the way.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I didn't know you were on offline. Um, well, I'm really excited to go over our proposal for the Job Shadow Pilot Program. Um, as we briefed with y'all in July, we are so excited to get this started, um, October fourteenth. We have decided to work with the Auditor's Office and Community Development. Um, the Auditor's Office is really excited to potentially do a young voter outreach project with the kids, um, as well as learning, archiving, licensing, recording, financial services, all of the above, um, and community development. They are looking to do planning projects, public hearings, uh, learning the process of buildings, inspections and permits and codes, all the fun stuff. Um, so, Community Development will be taking on six high schoolers, um, and then the Auditor's Office will be taking on two. Um, and they will all be starting on August fourteenth, Tuesdays and Thursdays. They'll be here in the mornings, so you'll see them coming around the halls. Um, and the best part about the program, we're really excited to see um, how the uh, youth can shape Mason County and the future of Mason County, whether as employees or citizens. Um, so we really wanna focus on them learning what that is and what that could mean, and at the end, um, at the Tuesday briefing, we hope to be able to bring them um, up here to brief y'all on what they learned and, and the community, and teach them how they can shape the future of their county. Um, so, and then we are planning to have a celebration on the last day here in the chambers on October thirtieth, um, in that last hour from ten to eleven. We'll have cookies and lemonade and have the kids here to tell staff, um, and community members who'd like to come by and learn what they learned.
I love this, this is so exciting.
Yeah, this is gonna be a lot of fun.
Did any other departments show any interest?
We had a couple, um, but I think with this being our pilot, we wanted to kinda make sure we kept it a little small for this first one, and then see how it grows from there. Um, Public Defense is definitely one we, in the future, love to get going, um, once they're ready for us.
Right.
And we also took it a little bit slow this time, because we're working on the logistics of, um, you know, risk management, so the indemnification between us and the school, making sure that uh, everybody understands the rules of the road and who's responsible for what. Learned a lot from our partnership so far with, with the school system and even looking at what Commissioner General has done. Uh, Kayla's put a lot of work into making sure that we're crossing our i, and crossing our t's and nodding our i's, but yeah, we're looking forward to this, this is gonna be fun.
Yes, keeping everyone safe.
Yes, yeah.
And also enjoying and learning.
Right, right, it's such an amazing opportunity for them to come in and see how government actually works.
Yes.
Yeah, it's so different.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wish I would've gotten this program when I was younger, it would've been really cool to really understand how everything works.
Right, and the team over at the high school, they're doing a great job.
They are. I'm really excited to be added into this, and we get to attend their open house and brag a little bit about our upcoming program and hopefully get others in the community on board as well.
Right.
Yeah, we really, we, we kind of batted around, you know, what do we wanna do as far as theming this out? And really getting, uh, I think we're gonna stick with theme, multiple ti, um, the multiple iterations of this process of-
allowing the youth to shape the the future of Mason County Government. Um, because that really gets people thinking that this is not just a job shadow, this is something you can come to, take away from, and potentially do something with after, after your experience.
And keep it in the community. It's so important to come back and help those who helped you.
Right, and we have amazing people that work here, so the experience they're gonna get is gonna be cool.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to bring y'all to the table and update you on where we're at and so excited, October fourteenth.
So, one comment. I spoke with the new superintendent up in North Mason, and she would like to kind of come into this when it's appropriate and she would like to be part of this as well, not necessarily this particular one, but like you said, you're you're taking baby steps into it, but she expressed interest, so we have four high schools in the county, so maybe it expands to include all.
I would, I would ask Gretchen, um, the shelter team to get a hold of the North Mason teams because they can guide them through the process.
No need to reinvent the wheel.
Right, right. Wonderful, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for the next one?
Next one.
Okay, the next one is, uh, It's Me. It is a letter of support for Peninsula Alliance. And I think you know what Peninsula Alliance is. They've been a partner with Mason County for quite some time. Um, and this year, apparently they're applying for some additional funding and they would like a a signed letter of support from the county. So the letter of support is in there. Uh, right now it has my signature on there, but if you wanna have wanna give it a little more gravitas, we can switch that around and put the commissioners on there so you can all sign it. That's entirely up to you.
I think it would be cool for it to be signed by all the commissioners.
I agree.
I, I agree that the time allows, the time allow of this one, if they give me your time limit.
Yeah, I, I, I think time will be fine. Um, I sent them an email and said that it would, I'm hoping to get it on the the agenda for next week, so I think that'll work.
Yep, yep, we can sort of swap it.
Yeah, awesome.
Perfect, easiest one of the day.
Yay.
Now it's all jam.
All jam.
So this one should be pretty easy too. This is the um, the first thing that I have is the voluntary stewardship program, which is the um the program that's administered through Washington State Conservation Commission and we're just um administering to, you know, between them and the Mason Conservation District, so they're adding a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the contract. Um, and so we just need to amend um our contract and then amend, amend our two contracts, so um add the agreements and amend nineteen dash zero five three um with Mason Conservation District to um allow them to use that money. So, any questions or comments on that?
No, that's.
It's awesome.
That's excellent.
Okay, and then the next thing that I have are the financials for August, and I will share my screen for that. Okay, beginning on uh the revenue sheet for current expense. Um, so far, through August of this year, we have received um thirty-one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand compared to last year through August, thirty million five hundred and forty-three thousand. And we're at seventy-two percent of our um budgeted revenue this year compared to um sixty-eight percent last year. And um one of the things that is driving um that number up a little bit is um the MaceCom um sales tax that comes in and out. So I will be asking for a budget amendment for that. Um, and again, it's just an in and out, but uh we've um, they've received a lot more sales tax um than we anticipated, so um so that's a big, a big driver and um nothing that really affects us at all, so just in and and out. Moving on to, and stop me if you have any questions or comments along the way. Um, moving on to the Treasures Revenue Detail. Through August of this year, we have received in the Treasures Office twenty-one million four hundred and one thousand dollars compared to last year, twenty million one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We're at seventy-two percent of our budgeted revenue this year compared to uh sixty-nine percent last year. For current expense expenditures, we have expended through August thirty-four million two hundred and ninety-five thousand compared to last year, thirty-one million eighty thousand. We're at sixty percent of our budgeted um expenditures this year compared to fifty-nine percent last year. Benchmark being sixty-six point six seven percent if we were to expend one, one twelfth, you know, every single month. So um, so overall, we're looking uh good, I think, on the expenditures. Um, one department, I think I mentioned this last month, Courthouse Security, they will most definitely need a budget amendment. They're at seventy-four percent of their their budgeted expenditures this year, and that was anticipated really with um Building Ten going into um service. Uh, the special fund, six-year recap on just some uh different revenue sources, um, community development, oh, that's December. Twenty-two, so, okay.
I'm going back in time.
Yeah, we don't wanna go back there. Um, so, I mean, not that it was bad, but we, we wanna stay current. Um, August, um, through August, our current, our community development revenues are at one million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand and um just comparing it to last year, it looks like there was a big um downfall, but a lot of um, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head how much is included in the community development, um, transfer from ARPA, but um, that's a big, a big difference, um, why it's so much less this year than last year, but if you compare it over the previous four years, we're right in line with um with where we should be with community development.
We had a lot more permits last year as well.
Yeah, I think last year did have more permits as well, but um, but nothing to be alarmed about is my, my point from my point of view. Property taxes um are pretty well in line with um with last year. The sales tax, um, we had a huge jump this year, which I'll get to on the next sheet. Filings are, are actually up over last year. Lodging tax is still, still down a little bit, and I got notified that there was another refund um for lodging tax. So um, so it could show, I think, a negative revenue again, or not negative, but um a flat, yeah, revenue for, for um the next month or two. And uh rate is um looking, looking good. It's up over last year, so.
Nice.
Um, the sales tax, I thought this was an error at first when I, when I saw it, a one point one point three million for August. Um, that's an increase of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand over, over last year at the same time for, for just that one month. Um, I don't know why, like what that is for. I'll try to get more information from Department of Revenue on that, um.
Well, interesting enough, while we have the same thing come up that the eight people were wondering if it's in the city or county, it's obviously county. Whoever it is, it, it could be the new construction that's just outside of the city limits that they're waiting to annex.
Probably. Yeah, well, they'd love to annex more.
Um, but right now, we're, we're looking at a projected um ending sales tax number for twenty twenty-five of over um ten point four million, so um so that is looking really good. We budgeted nine point five million for twenty twenty-five. And I think in the twenty twenty-six budget right now, we have nine point six million um budgeted, so I mean.
We're always very, we always tend to go more conservative.
Yeah, on the sales tax, we have um generally tended to go conservative. And it's been a steady increase over the last um five years or so, um, maybe more.
Does it have anything to do with all the firefighting efforts? A lot more people, a lot more equipment, a lot more, I don't know.
I don't know, usually about two months behind, right?
Yeah.
For the sales tax, and so.
So this would be for June.
When did Bear Gulps start?
July, fourth of July.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I think it actually was the sixth of July, but.
Yeah.
Just through.
Yeah, I don't know, we're, we're sort of there. I know when they, when they bill, they have to, they, they go through federal contracts. And so, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe they're all staying at Airbnbs, but that's down, never mind.
But that's only down because of that refund, so I mean it.
Yeah, well, who wouldn't want a vacation here?
Yeah, it's a great place. Um, the six-year financial recap, so um at the end of August, we had um twenty-four million five hundred thousand in the bank and you can see um all of our reserves per our policy up above. Um, we have at the end of August, unreserved cash of um four point, close to four point four million dollars. Nothing in the red. So just wanted to point that out.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Um, again, we are at seventy-two percent of our budgeted um revenue in the, in the general fund and um sixty percent of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund. And then um through August, all of our special fund cash balances are a total of um sixty-six million, close to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that is um an increase um over the previous five years, even with um removing uh or having spent most of ARPA.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Motor pool, um, we have expended through August um one point one million dollars. And last year we had expended nine hundred and seventy-eight million dol- I mean, one, one point one million. Last year we expended nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, rather, not nine hundred and seventy-eight million.
Neat trick.
Yeah, um, we're at fifty-two point five six percent of our budget this year compared to fifty point five one last year. We will be bringing um forward to you um the recommendation from Enterprise on um replacing some of our white fleet vehicles ahead of time. We had a meeting um last week internally about that again, so um, so yeah, I'll, I'll be bringing that forward to you um in the next few weeks. Because Enterprise is saying we're going to save money by um, by rolling those out early and getting new leases, so. So we looked at those numbers a little closer internally and it does look like we, we will. Um, going to the special fund revenue. We've received in our special funds thirty-six million seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand this year. We're at sixty-five percent of our budgeted revenue compared to last year. We had rece- received forty million two hundred and ninety thousand. We were at sixty-four percent last year. Expenditures for the special funds, we've expended thirty-four million one hundred and sixty-two thousand this year and um last year, thirty-four million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And we're at forty-nine percent of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to forty-six percent last year. For the county debt through August. Can't see it, my thing's in the way. There we go. Okay, okay, so we um, we're at fifteen million, I, I know you can't see it, but my, uh, my screen was in, in the way for our meeting. Um, fifteen million eight hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and nine dollars is what our um total county debt is, and that includes our um, general obligation and revenue bonds and any loans that we have, so um, so we have you know, a large debt capacity um remaining, so, um, any questions on or comments on any of this?
No.
I have a comment on, so I'm looking at a four percent uh uh increase on revenue compared to last year. That's uh quite a bit, uh, looking at a half a billion in uh self-tax over the top. And one of the things that I'm going to make note of is although I understand your comment about uh uh, the, the uh ARPA funds that it comes to, it's limited development, but even from what we budgeted, which would have included what ARPA funds would be coming out for three hundred fifty thousand backwards. So it's something to just make note of.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um. Yeah, it's not, in, the community development revenue isn't increasing at, at the rate like the sales tax is, yeah, you're, you're right.
But it's also not, it's not what we had budgeted. We budgeted it with the idea that ARPA funds would be expended or not expended, stuff like that. So it was our budget was three hundred fifty thousand backwards, so I just wanted to make the point that's not ARPA issue. If it is, then we made a mistaken budget and we budgeted ARPA funds, so we're not gonna go in there with smoothly a dollar. So we're still got something happening this year, it makes a thousand difference regardless of ARPA.
Yeah, I think that the ARPA funds are in the expenditure like we were going to transfer them and we can remove that out of the um, the budget. I'll, I'll take another look at it. It hasn't been my, my focus at this point. I've been focused on twenty twenty-six. Um, so I'll, I'll take a look at that a little bit closer and see if we need to alter that.
No problem. I, I just didn't notice that if there, if it's something that we budgeted long, we need to know that so we don't have to worry about it.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments?
For me?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure you don't wanna look at that anymore.
If we do, we got it. In your packet, so, that's good. All right, anything else for us?
Nope.
Okay, so we had planned on doing a TOPE workshop, but I had requested that we postpone that until Randy, you're, you're in person here. I think it'd just be easier.
I very much appreciate that, Commissioner.
And also the utility rate workshop, which was scheduled for tomorrow. I asked that that be rescheduled as well until you're here. That way you can enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm very grateful, appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, well, you need to enjoy your vacation.
My wife was so mad when I told her that was gonna be the other night, so I'll get my day back, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anything else?
No.
Are we good? How about a motion?
Uh, do we, do we have any motion to adjourn or are we going to go into discussions?
Um, we could discuss if you'd like to. Do you have anything to discuss?
I guess uh the, the only thing I would like since Cal had the speaker, did you guys have any luck getting a hold of uh Josh was gonna get a hold of uh the Hunters?
I was able to speak with Joe Staley, who was the um, the person they Hunters had hired to do the tree removal, and he was gonna reach out to Hunters, um, and so I let him know what was going on and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this uh gentleman came in last week and
Yeah.
Had, had an issue, so that was, that was my only discussion.
Okay.
And I'm sure he, he'd really appreciate your fast action, Commissioner. Thanks for doing that.
All right, Commissioner Netherland, do you have anything to cuss or discuss?
Cuss or discuss? I'm a chair. I'll go ahead and move me to her.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.